All right. I will call to order this meeting of the Select Board on September 12, 2023 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording? Seeing none. I will note for the record that participating this evening are myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey remotely. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we do not have any minutes to approve this evening, so I will move on. Next on the agenda is the proclamation for Hingham Congregational Church's 175th Jubilee celebration. Do you want to just read the proclamation or any discussion? Okay. All right. I will kick it off, and then Joe, if you want to do the next two sections, and then Bill, do you mind doing the last two sections?
No, I don't have it up on my phone, so why don't you guys take it out?
Okay, we'll split it. Sure, sounds good. Yep. "Town of Hingham, Massachusetts proclamation in celebration of the 175th Jubilee of the Hingham Congregational Church. Whereas the Hingham Congregational Church has stood as a beacon of faith, compassion, and community for 175 years, and whereas the Hingham Congregational Church has been an integral part of the Town of Hingham for generations, building bridges of understanding, spiritual growth, and solidarity within its congregation and our community; and whereas the Hingham Congregational Church has partnered with the Hingham Public Library to further its mission of enlightenment and progress in the form of a book drive focusing on literature and addresses crucial matters of our time, racial justice, social equity, LGBTQ+ rights, and climate consciousness."
And whereas the Hingham Congregational Church, through this book drive, aims to inspire conversations, broaden horizons, and drive positive change by providing resources that empower individuals to understand, engage with, and champion justice in all its forms. And whereas the Hingham Congregational Church, ever attuned to the evolving needs of local citizens, continues to serve the community through donating the proceeds of its consignment shop located in the church basement to local charities, upholding a tradition of sustainable living and communal support. Now therefore, we, Elizabeth F. Klein, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey, the Select Board of the Town of Hingham, proudly commemorates the 175th Jubilee of the Hingham Congregational Church and recognize the profound impact the church has made on the spiritual, social, and civic life of Hingham. We extend our gratitude to the Hingham Congregational Church for its enduring commitment to fostering a more just, compassionate, and interconnected world. May the Hingham Congregational Church's legacy continue to flourish and serve as a source of unity for generations to come. Dated this 12th day of September, 2023, it will be signed by Elizabeth F. Klein, Chair, myself, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey.
Excellent, thank you. Well, congratulations to the Hingham Congregational Church, and I hope it's a lovely celebration this weekend. Next on the agenda is to consider the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Break Rock Brewing LLC for the annual Weir River Farm Fall Festival to be held on Saturday, October 7, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Let's see, I think we have Ann Smith-White with us. Do we have Jay Southwood as well? Excellent, welcome. Hi, how are you?
I'm great.
Excellent. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the event?
So, our, uh, we're here at a third event, um, at Weir River in the past year. Um, first time doing the fall festival, but as I've been told, it's pretty similar to the spring event we've participated in. Uh, I have a very family-friendly, we'll be some good tracks there. Our brewery friends from Widowmaker are very often here as well, so looking forward to it. We'll be there, staffed, and we'll, uh, just serve a nice service as well.
Excellent. Ann, do you want to add anything?
No, I think Jay's got it. We're hoping for some good weather, please, and somewhere between 600 and 1,000 people, hopefully.
Okay, excellent. Yes, I saw the time was updated and the amount of people that were expected, and I understand it was signed off by Chief Jones as well.
Yes.
Okay, and I know it's a similar setup to other events. I don't have any questions. Do you, Joe?
No, I've reviewed it, and it's very similar to what we've seen before. We wish you good luck.
Excellent. Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. I need to take a motion.
I move to authorize the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Break Rock Brewing LLC for the annual Weir River Farm Fall Festival to be held on Sa- Saturday, October 7, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
I just note that there is no rain date for this in what's being proposed.
Correct. Yes, thank you. Good luck.
All right, and Ann, I think you'll stay with us. The next on the agenda is to consider the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Widowmaker Brewing LLC for the annual Weir River Farm Fall Festival to be held on Saturday, October 7, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Do we have Colin Foley with us?
I'm available.
Hi, Colin, how are you?
I'm good, you guys?
Good. I know it's the same event. Is there anything you want to add?
No, really, we've been doing, uh, the best for, uh, a couple of years with the trustees now, um, so, pretty much not much to add beyond Jay or Andy Matt or any of the talk over the past couple of years.
Okay, excellent. Um, any questions?
It all looks in order. I will note that on your application, the number of expected attendees is significantly lower than what we are expecting, but I don't think that has any bearing on our willingness to approve this, so I've got no questions.
Yes, I know, Ann confirmed that it was between 600 and 1,000. And I'll just make a comment to remind, to recycle where possible, Ann, if, I know you usually do that at the festival, but I have seen that at other events. Certainly, we need lots of recycling bins. Bill, do you have any? Sure. Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions about the application.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, ready to take a motion.
I'd make a motion, authorize the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Widowmaker Brewing Incorporated for the annual Weir River Farm Fall Festival to be held on Saturday, October 7, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill? And I'm an ayes, well, passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Good luck. I hope your weather's good. Next on the agenda is new elementary school project update. Let's see, all right. Sure, yeah, come on up. Is Linda here as well?
Linda could not make it this evening.
No worries, just didn't want to leave her out.
Good evening. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street, speaking for the School Building Committee.
Chris Carroll, owner's project manager, PMA consultants, and also 18 Burma Circle.
Okay, so we've got a deck for you. If you haven't been by the site recently, I encourage you all to go by the site because it's really kind of neat.
It is, it's very exciting.
There's a lot of steel going up, a lot of progress being made every day, and it's really, really exciting to see. So, what you're looking at is a visual that you've seen before. This is what, uh, the architect's rendering of what the elementary school will look like when finished and associated site attributes. We thought we'd just, um, you know, update people on some of the numbers, right? So this is a significant project for this town, over $113 million approved at town meeting last November. And what you see there is kind of a breakdown of different categories of where that money is allocated, the different, different aspects, architect and engineering, the construction, which is the largest budget, obviously, which includes both site construction, which has been going on, um, for a number of months as part of Phase 1, and then the construction of the building, which has already begun as part of Phase 2 and Phase 3. And so right now, um, you actually see both contractors, the site contractor for Phase 1, still on-site finishing the retaining wall, um, going to be finishing the loop access road and underground utilities, um, in the next couple, three weeks, working hand-in-hand with the Phase 2 and 3 contractor, uh, who has already begun, obviously, building, um, the building, foundation work, steels, a steel structure, and, um, uh, some other things that we'll see in a minute. The, the nice, um, the nice thing that came from, um, the project was, uh, the site contractor in Phase 1 is actually the site contractor for Phase 2 and 3. So, the contractor Bacon Construction, who's building the building, hired KRR, or Resendez, as we call them, um, to do the site contract work for the other phases. So they're going to be on-site continuously, um, and interestingly, the town chose to replace the water main on down a rav at the same time, the town hired the same site contractor to do that work as well. So, there's some value in continuity, I think, um, so that's working out so far, so good, but it's, it's a busy area.
Yes.
Those of you who live in Crow Point know very well how busy it's been recently, so...
And just for clarity, Phase 1, uh, Resendez was the lowest qualified bidder, so it was competitive pricing. The water project as well, same thing. And then for the bacon, they also did competitive pricing solicitation with Resendez coming in at the low end, so it was all competitively priced, and Resendez was able to, probably because they're already there, keep the prices low.
Good.
Right. So if you want to go to the next slide, um, so just a breakdown of, of the bidding that we went through, uh, a couple of months back, actually, maybe it was March or April, April. We actually ran into some situations where we only got one qualified bidder, metal windows, for instance, we had to deal with that a different way. There are statutes that govern how you have to approach this, obviously. So it's, it's all worked out, um, but it's, it's interesting how, you know, in some trades, you get a lot of interested bidders and others not as much. We found that there's a lot of construction going on in the Commonwealth right now, not just school construction, but overall commercial construction, so, um, while contractors bidding on this job were eager for it, a lot of them didn't have the, the ability to take it off. And the next slide, um, kind of aggregated breakdown, um, so the construction bidding numbers, um, if you, if you take a look at the change in the contingency in the first tier here versus the second tier, the, the delta of about a million four represents, um, access to some contingent contingency funds that the building committee decided to, to, um, make available, um, because it wanted to pursue geothermal wells for the HVAC system. Ultimately, that's going to be the, the best system for the town in terms of efficiency, in terms of, um, you know, green energy use and cost savings over time. We also accessed a little bit of it, um, for the metal windows, which I showed you on the prior slide, we only got one bidder for, had to go through a rebidding process. As a result of that, um, while the number we ended up with was far less than the ridiculous bid we got initially that we rejected, um, it was still more than what the budget was carrying for that line item, and that's just the nature of the construction economy right now.
Sure.
But I can still say that not only we on schedule, but we're on budget as of now, so it's encouraging. We can go to the next slide. So progress, just more of the number breakdown, and then we'll move on to some, some nice visuals. As I said, the Phase 1 site contractor, $7,99,000 was the, um, was the full contract for that, and, uh, the building contract, uh, was a little over 82 million, so the combined is the 89 construction costs for the project, which is the largest line item, obviously. Um, so now we get to some visuals. So this is Building B, so we're at the west, west?
East end.
This is the east end, sorry. I'm acclimating myself. This is the east end of the site behind the existing school. So, if you recall, the building is kind of like this. This is what we call Building B, which is going to be in this, this is probably the awning here for the pre-K entrance, if I would guess, right? So, the pre-K is going to be here, other classrooms and administration, um, on that side. Building A is, well, they all have classrooms on the second and third floors, but on the first floor, it's predominantly common space, like gymnasium, cafeteria, things like that. So this is Building B, um, where the, the steel has been going up for, um, a few weeks now, and it's really exciting to see the progress. On the next slide, you'll see the foundation progress of Building Area A, which is this one, if you're kind of looking at it like that. Again, from the east exposure, looking, looking west behind the existing school. So that's where the, as I said, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, um, um, some of the entryway, the multipurpose space, um, so that's exciting to see as well. This is a site, this is a picture looking back to the east, um, of the two-level retaining walls. So as you know, we had to dig into Otis Hill for a number of reasons. One, because it's the, was the best place to site the building, but also because we needed to use that fill in order to raise up the site out of the floodplain. As a result, there is a two-level, um, retaining wall, which is about 95% complete. There's just backfilling that remains at the east end, uh, over here, uh, as well as plantings all along there that will solidify and hold the, hold the hill. On the next, you see a large stockpile of dirt. So, um, the principal calls this Mount Foster, I think. So it was necessary to move this. This was at the rear of the, of the site, um, but it was sitting right on the location where we're now, um, drilling the geothermal wells. So it had to be relocated, and this was really the only spot. So this is on, on the, um, I guess it's the, the western portion of the, of the site toward the north, um, and if you look at the next slide, you can see, so, here's where the dirt is, right here.
Okay.
And this is a newly configured parent drop-off and bus drop-off, um, that was completed just before school opened, um, um, which enables us to, you know, for, for quite a period of time while we're working behind, to, um, you know, make sure that, that the students are getting in and out safely, both from their parent cars as well as the buses, and a lot of times that happens at the same time. So it was very important that it be coordinated and set up in a safe way.
Just to comment, the primary purpose of that stockpile will be to backfill Foster. When Foster's demolished and removed, the soil will be used to build up the foundation and also bring up the elevations for the final landscaping and parking.
Okay.
Okay. So the next slide, this is again behind the existing school, and this is the area where the geothermal well work is being done. So there'll be a field of wells underground that are hundreds of feet deep, um, and, um, that's going to be the source for heating and cooling. It's really remarkable stuff. The next slide, you can see the drills in action, and the first, actually, two wells were completed today, um, and there's a typo that says inches, it should be feet, 605 feet deep. So it's really, really neat. And there's almost eight, 80 of these wells being, um, being drilled, so two in, so probably another two months or so about of that, probably.
Hopefully less.
Hopefully less, yeah.
They get somewhere between two to four, they have two rigs, they hope to get between two to four holes per day, so...
This is just kind of a reminder of the site layout. The blue is obviously the existing school, the yellow is where the new building will be. You can ignore the image of the tennis courts there because there won't be any, um, but you can see where things will be set up in terms of the parking and, and site circulation once completed. On the next slide, this shows a layout once the new school is complete and the existing school has been demolished, and the parking and other site attributes have been put in. There's a softball field up here, parking, the regular loop, and this goes all the way around, and, um, the circulation has already been, been set for this phase, um, once the new school is open and operating. So, on the next slide, we just thought we'd remind everybody of the schedule, so it's, it's been a very ambitious schedule from the very beginning, and we're still on it, and it's really exciting that we are, and every day is a lot of work and progress getting done. So just to remind everybody, a lot's happened in a short period of time. We just brought bacon on in May after bidding in April to construct the building, um, and in July, mid-July, the building permit was issued for that. Concrete placement, uh, you know, within 10 days of that, and then steel happened a month later. So the foundation work really went fast. We were lucky, even though it's been a really wet season, we've also had some really good weather at times, and they, the site contractor, both contractors really have taken advantage of that when they, when they've been able to. So, as we said today, the geothermal wells, first ones were completed today, um, and then, you know, we fast-forward, construction of the school, and then next May, it'll be pretty much where it's going to be so that a lot of the systems can be tested and commissioned and up and ready. And then August is when we're going to be getting it ready to open for September back to school. And then the site work, once the existing school is demolished, uh, the parking areas and the fields and things like that will be completed by the next spring. So, we're, we're still following the schedule that we've been on from the beginning, we're excited that we are. A lot's happened in a short period of time, but everything's been going really well. You know, we understand that it's an inconvenience for a lot of people, people in the neighborhood, you know, teachers, students. I think we're doing the best we can to cooperate, to make sure we mitigate, um, any inconveniences as much as possible. The unfortunate nature is it's an active construction site, and it's going to be for a year. So, um, you know, so far, so good, and, uh, we look forward to the next update.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Ray, and thank you, Chris, for being here. I'm thrilled to hear that it's on schedule and on budget, um, and it's exciting to see so much progress. I have driven by, and so much has been done even since the groundbreaking ceremony, um, at the end of August, so kudos to you and the whole team. I know it's a lot of people making this happen.
Well, we're, we're really fortunate, you know, I can't say enough about the team that we have. It's, it's really exciting to have such great professionals, and the fact that we have, you know, local ties with our OPM and our, um, architect, um, just makes it that much more pleasant.
Yes.
And I know that they feel a sense of pride, uh, in it as well, which, which, which shows in the quality of the work.
Sure.
So I think we're all thrilled in, in, in the team we have.
Good. Excellent, excellent. I know Dr. Adams and Ness Karanti and Ayesha Pong are here. Did any of you want to add anything?
We're grateful to the town and grateful for collaboration with the School Building Committee.
Excellent.
Extremely grateful.
Good. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say that, so, new superintendent's been here a little over a year, and this got thrown into her lap along with everything else.
Everything else.
And, and, and she's really, she's taken it in stride. I think, I, I met her, uh, a year ago, July, on this site, walking around, um, in the mud, I think, um, so maybe it was grass then still, I don't remember. But, you know, I, I think the administration has done a great job in, in kind of taking this on and managing what it has to, because there's a lot of responsibility with the MSBA, submitting things for reimbursement, and, and there's a lot of administration that's required, and, and along with everything else, they've taken it on, um, and are great partners in this, so.
Yes.
We're thrilled. The whole thing is, has been going so well, uh, so far.
Good. Yes, while also managing a, a fully functioning school, so...
Go.
So I'm glad to hear that, and I know you're trying to mitigate the disruption as much as possible, so thank you. Joe?
So I just want to add my thanks. I know members of the public have communicated with me their appreciation for the work, and, um, we are all proud of, of, of how it's progressed. I do just have a couple of questions. You said it's on, it's on budget. Are we on budget in terms of outlays going out, and also, uh, to, to the extent that we're getting MSBA reimbursements? Is that, does that happen now, or does that happen at the end? What, what's the sequence for that?
Yeah, we, we are. The, the MSBA reimbursement, um, program is kind of a, they call it pay-as-you-go, so, um, as, as we submit requisitions, they review them, and then they, um, submit reimbursements based on what they deem eligible, um, but it's all in accordance with the budget that's already approved, and so there are no surprises.
No surprises in terms of what's, what's reimbursable or not?
And, and the town accountant's office should get, there, there's a whole group of people on notification of whenever those reimbursements come to the town.
And, um, is it the normal process as payments go out that we get releases of liens, so...
We do. That's a requirement of the contracts, so there, you know, there, there are no liens. We know the contractors, and the GCs are responsible for their subs, um, but yes, we're, they're responsible for carrying bonds, the contract provides for no liens, and yes.
And do we do a withhold, like typically, like 10% of, of what goes out, or is, are we fully...
The retainage?
Five percent.
5% is the retainage?
Okay.
And has communication with the abutters been handled well? If people have issues, they know how to reach you or to reach the contractors and to make sure that things are worked out?
Yeah, I, I think, um, so I know of a number of communications, some folks have reached out to me directly if they knew how to get me or knew me, um, some have reached out to the OPM, some have reached out even to, um, uh, DPW or the water company in terms of the water main work that's been going on. We, it's, you know, there, there's always going to be complaints, there's always going to be concerns, we try to address those pretty quickly. Chris and I kind of jump on those, and we make sure that we respond pretty promptly when, um, when we get a notification of that. I think the principal has fielded some inquiries as well, and he's really good, um, at responding to folks and, and making them feel comfortable, uh, under crazy circumstances, so...
These are crazies, and I was just going to go there in terms of the impact on the ongoing school operations, not only the school itself, but the transportation to and from, and sporting events, things like that.
Yeah, I, as far as I know, the impact has been what you would expect it to be, but it's not hindered anything. I know I've heard of, um, you know, because now the drill, the well drilling has started, and that's loud.
Yep.
We may look to reposition the rig in a way to reduce the noise to the classrooms, um, because obviously we want to try to mitigate as much as possible. Something's just not going to be able to avoid.
And, and now the, the students have an excuse for not hearing their teacher because it's the noise that's blocking it.
I'll, I'll leave that to the education.
But, but in terms of ongoing school operations, you're, uh, it's really, I guess, to Dr. Adams, that you're satisfied that, that things are progressing in an, in an acceptable manner?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just so everybody can hear you. Oh, either place, yeah.
I guess I would say it's a construction site, and we well know that. The staff is trying their best. I think the kids are... I think the kids are very excited to be part of the project and many of the windows are faced about the, all the construction and trying to make it something that's really exciting. I think the noise that, you know, the, as the project goes through its phases, um, we need to readjust. And, um, we've got, got a great working relationship, um, with the OPM and everybody on site. They meet weekly on Tuesday mornings to discuss concerns. So there's been a lot of flexibility and a lot of collaboration on, and everybody's part. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our young people to see this going on around them as well as it requires flexibility on everyone's part. So we're making do and we're looking forward to moving in next September, keep knocking on wood.
Big improvement over where they are now, so.
Yeah, yeah. Also as the weather, you know, gets colder and the windows are closed, the heat is on. I'm imagining a lot of that noise will be a little less over time.
And then bus transportation to the schools, that's proceeding appropriately?
Yeah, I think with a lot of the, again, a lot of collaboration, there was a lot of discussion about how to best do drop off and pickup. And there were a lot of modifications. I expect as the week goes on, there'll be slight other modifications, changing in staffing and, um, but everybody's being flexible and adaptable and trying to make sure that students get in safely and leave safely. So, um, I think we have a good routine going on and we're grateful for the collaboration. And, um, the principal, Matt Shifely, has done a great job in trying to brainstorm and see the possibilities of how to use the space in order to do so.
Great.
Great. Thank you. No other questions?
Excellent. Bill, any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a comment in first class, it's impressive to, to go back there and see, um, the progress that's been done in a short time. So fantastic, Mike, um, the compliments to you, Ray, Chris and your entire team for the progress that you've made. Wonderful to see that, um, we're still on schedule, we're gonna be hopefully open, um, in September twenty-four. I also wanted, um, uh, compliment you, Dr. Adams, uh, for doing a wonderful job, um, with, with, with the students there. I agree with you that you, Principal Shifely, the entire faculty and staff have done a really good job, being flexible and adjusting to the conditions out there. So, uh, great work, um, Ray, you're, you're awesome and I appreciate all the work you did.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, when will we expect the next update?
Whenever you like.
Okay.
Um, we, we, we will have to come back and maybe we don't have to do it in this setting, but we will have a project funding amendment that'll likely be coming, um, in a month, maybe two, maybe later. It depends. Because I think, uh, the MSBA is, well, so we have, we have an amendment now that bidding for the, the next phase, the building has gone through, um, and we have the solid numbers. You always do a project funding amendment that reflects those solid numbers. But there, the MSBA is holding it back, um, a little bit because, um, legislature had passed statute that is making available additional funding to MSBA school projects, which we may, uh, be the beneficiary of. So we're waiting to hear details about that and, um, any additional reimbursement would be, uh, spelled out in that project funding amendment.
I'm glad you mentioned that. Should we be in contact with our state senator or rep to be making specific requests? Or is that otherwise being handled?
We've been communicating with them all along through the process. It's now, i- it's now been enacted. So I just, I think it's an administrative matter of the MSBA applying it to the projects that fall under the, the applicable criteria.
My impression is it's a formula. We can't really advocate for a number, so unfortunately.
Yeah, and I think.
But it's good news. It's great news that it's coming.
And I think in our case, it would probably be most applicable to, you know, if you recall, there are certain thresholds, um, for reimbursement. You know, whether it's eight percent of this, of the construction cost for site reimbursement and things of that nature. So this, this would add additional reimbursement over those thresholds. I think that's probably where we're going to see, um, a benefit. I have no idea how much it'll be, but I'm hopeful it'll be something.
Great.
Yeah, it's greatness.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you, Ray. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Appreciate it. Exciting stuff. All right, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Jet Dock Systems for a floating dock for the Harbor Master. We have Harbor Master Ken Corson and Kathy Riley. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thanks for being here. You wanna walk us through this?
Sure. Um, this is the second jet dock that, um, I'm coming before you for a purchase of. It's a floating and actually also a sinking dock. So what it does is it.
Sounds ominous.
You don't want to be on it when it's sinking.
It, it floats, um, but then what happens is when you drive a boat up on it, it actually sinks down so the boat can, um, come up onto it and then it, it floats up and lifts the boat up out of the water. So we purchased one of these, um, a little while ago, but it just got delivered, it got installed. It's for Marine Two, it's working out fabulous, it's been really great. And, um, we have it in the budget to purchase another one. So for, for you to purchase the second one, which is for Marine One. And this will actually be connect, they'll be connected, they'll be in one slip. But they'll work independently, so we can launch one boat or retrieve another boat. Took a little while to get the contract here, um, because we want to make sure that they'll be able to fit into one slip, um, work tandemly. So it's, um, while I say it's the purchase of, um, a jet dock for one boat, it's actually going to be kind of, um, taking the frame from the one we have now, putting that on the other dock, basically switching the platform, so it's, it's gonna be, to make it fit in that one spot, we have to kind of work with, work with what we have, taking some new things and, and, and putting it together to make one composite unit that'll work independently. So if you read the contract, it's a little bit confusing because it talks about some different things, but that's kind of what's happening. We're gonna use the existing frame for, for Marine One's dock. We'll be buying a new frame and some additional floats, putting together to make, um, another unit.
Okay.
It has a bunch of different benefits. Um, it gets our boats out of the water. Saltwater is a big corrosion, we'll be able to stop painting the bottoms. It allows us also to get our engines out of the water, um, so they don't have to, um, endure the corrosion that they have every year. So there's a lot of benefits there. And, um, Waymouth has used these for, um, at least ten years now. They've had a lot of, I, I was skeptical at first, but Waymouth has used these for a lot of years. And, um, I've become a, a strong believer and very happy with what we have so far and excited and hopeful that we'll be able to move forward with this contract.
Okay, excellent. And I know you said that it, it's in the current budget. Can you just explain that? Is it part of the capital budget or the Harbor Master budget?
Um, it's part of the capital outlay budget.
Okay. Um, and do you think it can be complete before winter, this project?
Um, it'll be, it should be complete, it should be able to be completed within the six-month timeframe.
Okay, so no concerns about weather or anything?
No.
Okay. All right, excellent. Jody, have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just picking up on that. So during the winter months, is it taken out of the water?
So it'll stay in the water during the winter months.
Okay.
Stays in year-round.
And snow and ice?
Snow and ice.
Won't, won't, won't damage it or?
If we were to get a strong, um, ice buildup, which we don't get every year, but if we were to get a strong ice buildup, we will put, um, upwellers around it to keep the, okay, a strong ice buildup from, um, occurring. It does have zinks on it so that the, the metal frame underneath doesn't, um, sustain corrosion, that the zinks will, will corrode first.
Any environmental concerns? Um, are, are there any con-con permits or any permits?
We have all, we've obtained all the permits that we need to.
Okay. And what is the expected life of, of the dock that is being purchased?
That's a good question. Um, the, the black floats that, that the boat sits on and everything still have a lifetime warranty, um, as long as it's not damaged by us. If it's a failure of the, um, equipment, then they replace that. I, it says in the, I think it's, um, a five-year on.
The metal support.
Metal support and so forth. So, um, the big thing for us is to make sure that we keep the zinks on, on the, um, the metal frame so that the, it doesn't corrode. Like I mentioned, Waymouth has had theirs for over ten years. They really haven't done any significant maintenance to it. Every, the pumps, everything has been lasting and, and worked well. So I anticipate that we should get a long time out of this. Talking with other people that, that have used this, um, they've had, they've, some people have gotten twenty years on pumps and stuff. So it, it can last a long time. It really comes down to, um, you know, how well you maintain it, how often you're using it and different things like that.
Great. No other questions? Thank you. This is, this looks like a, a good move.
Bill, any questions or comments?
The only question is along the lines of Joe's question. Um, you know, can, can, what is, will we get a longer life out of them if we did remove them during the winter months? Or are they designed to be in during bad weather?
They're really designed to be in, um, year-round. Um, it's a, it's a big process to remove them. They're quite substantial in size and weight and you risk more damage by taking them out. They have a process for winter storage and, um, we, we would just use their system for winter storage, which has worked well. And, um, we think that's the best, best way to go forward. Plus, we keep our boats in the, we keep our boats in the water when it's, um, not frozen. We at least keep one in, one boat in, so we would want to keep at least one dock in, um, during the winter when it's not frozen.
Great. Uh, I know there's a need for it, so I totally support it. Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Jet Dock Systems, Inc. for a floating jet dock for the Harbor Master in an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and nineteen cents.
Thank you.
Roll call, vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm in Iswell. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
And we got to see the dock systems down at Barnes Wharf this weekend, uh, for ribbon cutting, which, so thank you for all of your help with that. It looks fabulous. Really, really nice.
You're very welcome.
Yes. Thank you. Did you want him to stay?
You're welcome.
Do you want him to just do it now? Ken, do you mind just commenting on the hurri, expected possible hurricane for this weekend and water harbor safety, boat safety? I don't want you to have to stay till the end.
I wasn't expecting this, but.
I know, we're putting you on the spot. We heard about this on the way over today.
Yeah, um, you know, it's still, it's still early, um, with what exactly gonna happen with the storm that's coming up. Everything that we're seeing right now still looks like it's really gonna be kind of going off, offshore. But we're gonna get some wind, um, potentially some rain. So, I mean, the smaller boats should definitely be coming out of the water. These types of things should be done earlier rather than later because if you wait too late, then it'll be low tide, you might not be able to get your boat out or, or the boat ramp might be too occupied. Or the weather's deteriorates too quick and you're not able to get it out. So, you know, small boats should come out of the water. People should, um, you know, make sure that their lines, chafing gear and stuff like that are on board, get their boats de-watered. We did just have a bunch of rain, um, so it's important to make sure that that's out of your boat before the storm arrives. Um, just all those standard precautions are, are best to get done, um, well in advance of any storm, especially with rain coming before the storm, so.
Okay.
And then just keep an eye on it, um, but, you know, as, as it gets closer, it's really, you know, the ability to do things, um, are not really an option as it, as it gets here.
Sure.
If you want to pull your boats or anything like that, those are things that need to be done now.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Hopefully that's helpful.
Yeah, do you have a question?
Ken, we're gonna cut the power to that station.
Okay. When are you gonna cut the power to that? Friday, okay, so what, um, is being referred to is the pump-out station, which pumps the sewage from the boat. So if anyone wants to pump, um. Yeah, so if anyone wants to get a pump-out, um, at the town, um, pump-out station, please get that done before, you know, Friday at five o'clock is probably the best time. Get it done before then, because there'll be no power to that pump at that time.
Ken, how do you communicate that to the boating community? Is it posted or emails go out? What, what's the process?
Yeah, so for something like that, we'll, um, we'll probably send that out in a communication to our boaters via, um, an email system we have. We also post it on Facebook and Instagram. I'll put that on my Instagram account and Facebook.
Great.
To give people information.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the update. Okay. Next on the agenda, downtown Hingham traffic calming measures update. JR Frye, I, you're all set. Thank you.
Thanks, good to see you.
JR Frye and Sergeant Kilry. Hi, JR. You're still muted.
I'm unmuted.
There you go.
There you go. Hi, Sergeant Kilry.
So, yes. So, I want to prepare a plan showing the locations of, um, signage and, uh, speed feedback signage that was, uh, installed over the past week we can have. So if Michelle could bring that up, or is it up already?
Uh, it is now.
So we installed four, uh, speed feedback signs and we installed, um, speed notification signs, uh, really speed limit signs, uh, throughout downtown to inform vehicles that are entering the area that they have entered a, uh, a thickly settled or business district. And so as you can see there, the, um, the yellow rectangles are the location of several of the signs as you enter downtown, obviously Central, Main, South, both ends of North Street, um, and as well as Lincoln. Uh, we also installed feet, uh, speed feedback signs. Uh, those speed feedback signs are an effective speed management tool that actively reduces, uh, driver's speed by heightening their awareness of what their actual speed is in comparisons to the legal speed limit. So we installed, uh, one of those on North Street approaching, uh, Fountain Square, uh, on South Street, before the, the curb entering downtown. Uh, we installed one on Main Street in front of the church and on North Street just beyond Cottage. The, uh, speed feedback signs are located to give the drivers, um, an opportunity to get up to, uh, their traveling speed. And if that traveling speed, uh, is in excess of the posted speed limit, then, uh, it will remind them to slow down and they'll pay in a law, uh, as well as be a courteous driver. So, um, you know, we can't necessarily put those right at an intersection. We have sight distance considerations that we have to, uh, accomplish so that people have an opportunity to see it and react. And, and beyond that, you wanted to generally have them posted in relative close configuration to a posted speed limit sign so that people can, uh, recognize that it's not set, uh, erratically uh, to twenty-five miles per hour, but it is actually a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. At this time, we will be evaluating, uh, the effectiveness of, of these traffic management tools. And, um, we're going to set up some speed monitoring to, uh, confirm, uh, compliance with the new posted speed limit. And, um, and so that, that is, uh, in an active planning stage. And then, excuse me, uh, beyond that, um, if it is determined based on the data that we receive back, uh, we will also look at, uh, other opportunities for traffic management improvements if they are deemed necessary. So that might be something like a speed table. And, um, the location for that, you might find that, uh, it would most likely be in, within the North Street alignment because, uh, you've got a straight run there without traffic control. And both ends of that corridor, uh, really tend to see the highest non-compliance, I would say, prior to the speed feedback signs. Separately from that, a little bit separately from that, but also something we've been kind of actively looking at are traffic improvements around. kind of actively looking at are traffic improvements around Fountain Square. That's highlighted with the gray cloud there. So that's something that Emily Whitworth and I will be actively looking at to identify improvements at that location that would also enhance traffic and pedestrian safety. Would you like to continue to the next slide?
Sure.
Okay, so there you can see two of the locations in action. You've got the North Street NRA Downtown on 3A, location on the left, and you've got the North Street heading towards Lincoln Street on the right. If you'd like to continue, Michelle? For those who are familiar, this is the configuration of a speed table that we identified. That's the primary picture. Now, keep in mind, this configuration is significantly different from what we would necessarily install if we determined it was going to be advantageous. It's, you know, this is four lanes of travel along with bicycle lanes and a very significant, also a significant amount of pedestrian traffic, that's right, in downtown Quincy. Ours would be less significant than that. Even with that, we, we'd still have to confer with all of our public safety chiefs and with the DPW superintendent. We have to make sure that any kind of improvement like that, we can handle any drainage. We don't, we can't mess up our drainage system and cut water off. We don't really want to do it in a location where we have to add drainage infrastructure either. So those are some of the things that we'll be looking at, as well as getting ADA compliance for any crosswalks that are associated with the speed table. On the left, you can see a rectangular rapid flash beacon. That's the one that we installed at the, at the library on 228. Excuse me. The, we do anticipate one location where it's definitely appropriate to install the RRB, and that's the crosswalk at the post office and entrances. We do have, there's a cost associated with that. We're going to be looking at exactly how we're going to fund it, and it's a little bit more expensive because of, we have to make sure that we can power it and everything like that. That's all I have to say.
Great.
Sergeant Kilroy, do you want to add anything?
No. I think JR summed it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. I will let you speak. Give me one second. Well, thank you, JR and Sergeant Kilroy, for putting the plan together. This is certainly something that we've been talking about for a while, and safety and traffic calming measures are a top priority for us in downtown. Tom, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to go on, on record here for a couple of things. One is, we received a bunch of feedback. I think Mr. Grandhand sent us an email. We've received some feedback from the, from our historic director Andrea Young notifying us of the potential for a public process need here. I believe this board asked for that at your last meeting. I could tell you that I think I got a little bit ahead of myself in my, in my desire to, to try to make this area as safe as possible, as quickly as possible. That said, I would suggest that we not change anything that's in there right now. We have a public process and an appropriate public process, whatever we deem that to be, and then if at the end of that, it's determined that we need to move some of these, then we'll move them. I don't think we should move them now. I think downtown is safer with them in place right now. If they are in the wrong location, we'll get them in the right location, but until we determine that, I think they should stay where they are. I imagine that process is likely the kind of thing that we could do over a month or so, month and a half process or timetable.
Yes. Thank you for mentioning that. Again, obviously, we're, we're very concerned with safety in the downtown area. I'm sure most people are aware there was a fatal accident on North Street recently, so I do think that this is an appropriate interim solution. I appreciate you acting quickly, but the board did ask for a public process and feedback to be given by residents. Certainly, we want to hear from the Historic Commission as well, and wanted to be presented with different options from an aesthetic perspective as well, so I would like to set that up with, with a series of public meetings. I will turn to my colleagues and then open it up for public comment tonight, but I think that the path forward will be a series of public meetings to, to come to the, the final solution. Joe, any questions or comments right now?
JR, I don't know what options are available for the posting, the, the speed limit and the, and the flashing signs. I mean, I know that, I mean, I saw the, what was posted, what was recently constructed on North Street, and I know that we went through a process of taking down the poles all along North Street, all the electrical poles, and now all of a sudden, one's being put up, and it just seemed counter to where the town had been going. So I didn't know what options you had other than the structure that's currently, that was recently put up there. Are there other options?
There are not other options for structure type other than changing the type of pole that we would install if, you know, if we went with a galvanized steel finish. Frankly, all of our, any of our significant traffic signalization, traffic management type equipment is mounted on black poles because that is generally considered to be much more aesthetic, and so that's what we did here. In terms of, in terms of installing a speed feedback sign, it's a sole empowered sign. There are no external wires, so this isn't something that, it didn't require us to dig underground trenches, which would have disturbed more of the sidewalk or, or had us go in the street, and we, we did not have to hang wires overhead in order to power this. So there's, it's a very minimal footprint for this type of speed management tool.
Is there a difference between what you would place in a business district or a commercial district versus in front of a residence in terms of flashing lights, or the height, or, or any other parameters of, of the, of what's being constructed?
In terms of the, I don't, for the most part, because these are, it's public safety signage, so the priority is that it gets installed in the proper location and at the proper elevation so that it can be, it, it's able to collect the data and give that data back to the driver as they're approaching the sign, and so that the driver can see it. It has a good, clear view of the sign as he approaches. And so, to the extent that if we're talking about moving a, one of these signs a marginal distance, five feet, 10 feet, and it gets it out of a bedroom window, like an occupied bedroom window, that where someone wouldn't want a flashing light going off at 3:00 in the morning when somebody drives down North Street, we're sensitive to that, and we would definitely try to address that. If we couldn't address it with location, we might address it with blinders and simply put a hood on one side of the sign so that it wasn't shining directly in someone's window.
So in terms of, was that part of your consideration when you put this, did the installation, the impact on, on someone's residence?
We did ask one building if the upstairs was occupied. This was on North Street next to Stars because the windows for that building would face the, the, the feedback sign, and so when we spoke with that property owner, that property is not being used as a residence, and, and so there was no issue with installing it at that location in terms of impacting, you know, light in, in their windows.
No other questions right now? Thanks.
Bill, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple, couple things I want to say. So, you know, I want to emphasize a couple points. First of all, we have heard incessantly from residents about the need to take action in the downtown area and throughout town with respect to speed. People have approached, approached me over the past three years quite often. We've received emails, a number of emails about the danger associated with speeding throughout town, and the calls for action on social media. In fact, they're quite often on social media that, you know, the SWAT board needs to do something to prevent tragedies. We've seen people getting hit. We've seen, Liz, you rightly referenced a fatal accident in this area about a week or two ago. So I think it's good that we are taking steps to address these issues, and not just downtown, too. We've implemented the 25 mile speed limit in various neighborhoods throughout town. JR, you put up some protective measures on crosswalks. I saw one on East Street, CM on Main Street. So this is all a step in the right direction, and JR, I appreciate you doing that, Jeff, you as well. I know you're always on top of these things, which is great. So I'm glad to see us taking action. That being said, I just want to emphasize, you know, Tom's point, I think what Joe was getting to as well. I think we should really look at two things. Number one, are these best positions and the best locations to address the problem? And are they in locations where they could be moved to maybe better address concerns from residents? You referenced a part about being near a house on North Street. The traffic on North Street is very dangerous, but if we can maybe move it to a different location, that'd, that'd, that'd be great, but it's a very dangerous traffic on North Street. That's my first comment. So I'd like to, I have a study as Tom said, to see whether or not the best position to address the problem, and if we could move them around, that'd be great. My second point I'd like to make is, JR, I would like you to get some input from Andrea and the District Commission. I'd like to see if we can somehow make, you know, these traffic control measures a little more aligned with our historical goals in the downtown area. If there's a way to do that, that would be awesome, and I think we should, but at, at the very least, we should solicit some feedback from Andrea and at least the leadership of the commission to get some input on how we might be able to have these look better. But that being said, you know, moving forward, let's have a public process, let's get some input from the store, and go from there. I think that's all I have. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Bill. Related to that, JR, could you just speak a little bit more, or maybe Jeff can add, about how we're going to evaluate effectiveness? What measures are we actually looking for, and what's an appropriate timeframe to have meaningful data?
We're, JR, we're putting up the speed feedback boxes to actually start getting some registered speed feedback post installation of these signs. We also have some educational enforcement going out now between the motorcycles and the traffic unit throughout the town, especially in the downtown area, with the emphasis on education and getting people like a later in their speeds. We're going to, you know, reevaluate. I'll talk with JR, JR, whatever you think is best for the, you know, time period for reevaluation.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Go ahead, Bill.
I have one additional point. Thank you, Liz, for recognizing me. So when I found out the feedback implemented, I went down to North Street, and I actually was, you know, I didn't have, wasn't there wearing a uniform, didn't have a speed gun. I was just sitting, I was kind of just standing there on the side of the road, and I would know cars coming down North Street, slow down. Slowed down. 20 miles an hour, 22 miles an hour, passenger were under 25. On the other side of the road, cars exiting the square, you know, I didn't, I can't tell you how fast they were going, but they were moving at a pretty quick clip. So it, it was having an impact, and I was very happy to see that, you know, there was a lot of cars moving down. But again, I'd like to see if we could do this, if we could do this a little better, but definitely ready for reflection. Thank you.
Yes. I, I, I think, you know, we all recognize the goal is, is not just about changing the mileage per hour in certain districts or even putting up signs. It's about changing behavior, right? So first, there was the very large electronic sign, kind of giving people a heads up that this was changing to 25 miles an hour. Then the, the orange signs were put up. Now the feedback signs. So I think this is all a process, and hopefully people will, will get used to it, right? It's a new, essentially, traffic pattern. You either need to slow down or don't go, don't cut through the square. So, you know, hopefully, you know, so I'd like to see us collect the data long enough to understand kind of that learning process and then figure out what a, a long-term solution is, and if these feedback signs are needed long-term, and, and if so, then a more appropriate potentially location and/or aesthetic look to, as Bill said, meet our historic goals for downtown. Andrea, did you want to add anything?
Yes. Thank you very much. I, I know, I believe Mr. Grandhand is in the audience, and perhaps Mr. Wilson, and perhaps it might be better to hear their comments first, after.
Sure. Joe or Bill, do you have any further comments? Okay. Do you want to come up? Do you mind, do you mind coming to the podium just so they can hear you? Just grab the microphone? Oh, you can sit up here if that's more comfortable.
Terry Grandhand, 7 Cottage Street. First of all, as Joe said, we, the town's spent a lot of money getting rid of the poles down there, and now they're putting this neon sign, billboard sign up. I just drove by it now. My blood is boiling over it. It's, the houses on North Street are close to the road, and I don't agree with Tom that there should be a month or two public input. They put them up. JR talked to Toscay, he didn't talk to me. I have, I have 25 North Street, and it's right in front of it. I'm getting, my tenants are complaining it's flashing in the kitchen at night and in their, their living room window. It looks like hell. It really does. And first of all, and Bill Ramsey mentioned it, the cars are going fast on the other side. I drove down off of 3A today, three or four times in front of the Stars. When you drive there, there's a perfect spot to put this sign where the telephone company has a, one of those secure lines to hold the pole in place. There's, it's 50, 50 yards into North Street, and it's not in front of the residential. They never got Historic Commission approval for it. They did it without public input, so they should be removed tomorrow. You, you can't, that's like, that's like, you know, ask, ask forgiveness, you know, don't ask permission, get forgive, forgiveness. We can't, we shouldn't give this forgiveness. They should remove these, these signs. It's devalued my property dramatically. My tenants are complaining. And again, they, when they come off of North, off of 3A near Stars, typically they're throwing, they're slowing down because there's those big pedestrians, red, and there's people crossing the street. They're going slow there. I know because I'm down in North Street all the time. They're coming the other way fast. If anything, that sign should be on the other side of the street, further down, not in front of your house, Bill. Not in front of your house, because if you had it there, you, you couldn't sleep at night. So anyways...
You put it in front of my house.
Okay. Yeah. But they do come down the street fast on the other side. What else am I, want to? Hingham, like I said, Hingham does not allow billboards, and this with a solar panel and everything else is a billboard. It looks like hell down there. It really does. And like I said, the Historic was not... It really does. And like I said, the historic was not, um, notified. Um, the, also, the houses on North Street are very close to each other, so that, uh, it's on top of the house. If you look at it, it's, it's just looks, 25 North Street, and I've done so much, asked Andrea to comply with historic and Hingham. I've worked with the historic commission for years. I've helped them to convince other property owners to maintain their properties historically. And I've done that at 25 North Street. And to have this sign put in front, to destroy the, the front of my house is, is a slap in the face. It really is. And I request a vote tonight to have the signs removed tomorrow. And then we have a, and, and we have a site visit down there and we can figure out a better location for these signs. Really. No disrespect for the time, for the town. I understand the idea of slowing traffic. Nobody wants to have slower traffic on North Street than me. But it should be done with, with these, these, um, you know, brick pathways and things like that, rather than these flashing signs in, in front of a historic residential area. Uh, so that's my comments. And I, I really, I really, I feel very strongly that these signs should be removed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Come on up.
My name is Tom Wilson, uh, 88 Summer Street in Hingham. Um, I, I came here actually to learn more about this program because, uh, I, and I want to make it clear, I'm not representing Old Ship Church in, in this discussion. Uh, I'm the building chair there and I've managed the projects over the past fifteen years and whatnot. But, uh, when we saw this, uh, what, what was it called? The feedback sign right, right in front of Old Ship, uh, uh, mo- most of us that have been involved, uh, just concluded that this couldn't be a worse place from a strictly an aesthetic standpoint. And I, and I understand from what you're saying. And actually, I'm, I'm glad I heard tonight that there's going to be a public, uh, period. We can all get together, I guess, and, and discuss it further. So that really answers most of my questions. Uh, uh, but, um, uh, again, the aesthetic impact, where it's located right now, that, that's the place that everybody sees the meeting house for the first time. It's where all the pictures are taken. The artists stand down there, do their paintings. It's a, it's not just Old Ship, but it's the bell tower as well. It's just a location that, uh, from a pure aesthetic standpoint is, is not good. However, there's, I recognize the safety issue and the speed issue. And so, so it's a matter of discussion, thinking it through a little bit more. But, uh, I, I do agree with, uh, the last gentleman that I, I wish we had been involved more with the decision-making upfront and, and had some input in, in the initial location. But Tom alluded to that in his opening remarks. Uh, so, so moving ahead quickly for safety's sake, that's certainly logical and, uh, worthwhile argument. But our concern will, will be meeting again and to discuss it further. So those are my comments.
Excellent. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Steve Dempsey, uh, 24 Spruce Street. Uh, I'll be quick. I just wanted to say I echo Tom and Terry what they've said. And you, you probably know I drive through the square quite a bit, uh, every day. And you, you're not wrong. There's a lot of problems down there. There's a lot of safety issues. My question is to consider, rather than, you know, perhaps the, just the constant pitter-patter of urbanization of the town, uh, how about just good old-fashioned patrolling, you know, maybe put a car down there or, you know, double up on that. I, I'm sorry, Jeff, not to give you guys more work, but if that could be a consideration, I think that would be equally as effective as a bunch of urban signage. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from members of the public? Oh, we'll go back to Andrea.
Oh, thank you very much. Thanks for recognizing me. Um, I, uh, I was surprised to see these signs that they had been installed. Um, as has been said earlier, the district's commission wasn't notified, um, although back in June, JR did send us some information. Um, it was, uh, we saw, um, a map, but it wasn't as explicit as the map that was shown this evening. So I think my, my comments really are, um, we, we have historic districts that we have maintained for many years. It's our, um, it's the visual representation of our heritage. Um, and maybe to some people, that's not important. But on the other hand, I think a lot of people do come to this town, um, to be able to experience what we have. And now we're part of, we're a partner in Revolution 250, so that celebrating the events of the American Revolution. And we anticipate having more visitors, um, to Hingham. And it is a goal, um, of this board and the select board and others to increase the, um, uh, the increase, the amount of tourism and people using our restaurants and buying our shops. Um, so the point is that we can, we can do this. These are not mutually exclusive. I think the signage is important. That, that case is, has already been made. What I think we can, um, work on is the opportunity to find other signage that is equally as effective. And I just did a little bit of research, um, this afternoon and was able to find a number of options. And there are companies that, um, make, oh, historic signage, um, or signage that is more compatible with phenols and other kinds of things to, um, make it more compatible in a historic district. Uh, they, you can still get the, um, the solar signs. You can still get the flashing stuff, um, if that's what we feel is, is important. But I think it can be presented in a completely, in a way that is not so obtrusive. Um, the other thing, the other thing is that the locations, I don't know how the locations were determined. I don't mean to second-guess you, uh, JR or Jeff, um, or Tom. I, I know you gave this a great deal of thought. However, um, we assign right this should not be placed in front of a national historic landmark. If you look behind me on my little screen here, um, that's Old Ship Church. That's the Old Ship Meeting House, right on our, our, um, town seal. I think it's important. It's important to the entire country. That's why it's a national historic landmark. I don't think a flashing sign, um, obscuring the view of this iconic building is appropriate. So I'm saying, let's just look at options for other types of signs. I mean, we all think they exist because I have researched that myself. And also locations. I think we can find better locations that, um, are a little less obscure. So thank you for listening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Andrea. I, I agree with Andrea and that was my expectation the last time we discussed this, that we would see options, uh, or would be presented with options. Um, so that is what I would like to see next, or what are those options? And then get, um, obviously input from Andrea Historic Commissions, as obviously also from JR and Sergeant Kilroy and the Traffic Committee to make sure that it's safe and it's, we're achieving the goal that we want to in terms of reducing speed and safety in the downtown area. Um, in terms of the public process, I'm envisioning adding this to our meeting agendas over the next several weeks. Is that what you were envisioning?
That's what I was thinking, too.
Okay. Joe, do you want to comment on any of that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, the concern that I heard from Terry is that these were placed without a process. And it's not appropriate to say, okay, we'll just keep them. And now we're going to have an extended period when it was already done in an improper way. So, um, and if you're talking, I think, about a short timeframe, two weeks, three weeks before there's an evaluation, that's great. But if you're talking three months, I think that's inappropriate. So I think we need to make a decision this evening, um, that there'll be a very strict time, time limit. Uh, there's the public safety concern, and I think there are options for dealing with it. Um, but I don't think it can go on for an extended time, w- without a definite time being set tonight when the decision will be made. So either we, we go with, with Terry's recommendation that they be removed now or there's an evaluation of some sort of interim placement, moving them from ship, uh, from the North Street location, and that's decided within two weeks. Um, so.
So just a couple of points.
Yeah.
One, it was a process. There was an engineering and a safety process that was evaluated. We didn't do the public process that you asked for. So I just want to make sure everyone understands there was a process. The main goal in that process was to keep people safe and stop from dying. So we're hopeful that that is going to in fact happen. I would suggest that safety is more important than aesthetics. I will always say that. I've said that throughout my seventeen-year career in this field, and I still believe it. And I'll say it every day, it's going forward. That said, there wasn't a public process and there needs to be. And I think we can do that according to your schedules. You set the public process schedules, we can, we'll meet it. Whatever you want that to be, we, if it's a joint session with historic districts, if it's a, an otherwise open meeting for the public, if it's a charrette, however you want us to do, we'll absolutely do it. The public process isn't what was followed. It was a process, to be clear.
Yes.
Well, I, I'm not aware of a public process involving the abutters, um, for the placement. So.
Agreed.
That, that public process did not happen.
I agree.
And in terms of an evaluation by this board, in terms of where they should be placed, I'm not aware that that process happened.
Again, public process didn't happen.
Right. Um, and, you know, it's, it's a difficult discussion because public safely, safety can trump anything.
Absolutely.
And, um, we've had, you know, you know, some unfortunate circumstances, the accident on North Street and others, and they need to be addressed. Um, but that doesn't mean we should disregard other factors. And so I'm, I'm suggesting that we need to be doing, doing it on an expedited basis. And so it's not, now that it's sitting here, it just stays there. So, I mean, I think we should agree on a timeframe.
At your will. Really, literally at your will.
Yeah. But recognize, I think that to go through the process, um, and in term, I mean, Andrea really raised some interesting points about other options. That may take some time.
I agree.
But that's not a reason to continue leaving the, these things that were placed without that process.
Also, I'll tell you, if you want to take them down, we'll take them down. I would argue we should leave them up for public safety purposes, but if you want to take them down, we'll take them down.
How, how much of an effort is it to remove them?
Or, or not to remove them, but to move them.
To move them.
Can I make a suggestion?
I think we should hear from JR.
Can I, can I make a suggestion that, that I meet the JR down there? So I think it's a flawed location, very flawed, not only from all the reasons I gave, but also.
Excuse me, excuse me, if you could.
No, you're, you're right.
I think it's a flawed location for not only the many reasons I gave, but, you know, you know, you know, the Old Ship Church, my building, 25 North Street, built in 1810, a very historic building, so it ruins the value of my property. So I have an issue with the assessor's office now. So, Tom. Um, and also, um, they weren't put up with permission by the neighbors and everything else. He, he contradicted himself. He asked Stars if, if it was going to bother them, but he didn't ask anyone else. And, but there's, the, the location is flawed because there's, there's a telephone pole right at the end of Stars' restaurant. And there's a guideway going into the ground from Hingham Light. Even Hingham Light doesn't, thinks this flashing sign, I asked them if they put it up. They said, oh, we're not responsible for that atrocity. So I think that, um, there's a perfect spot in front of Stars, next to a commercial building. Plus, there's two crosswalks right there. You want people to slow down there before the crosswalks, not after. And when they come off of 3A, they're going very slow because there's people always walking at Cafe Tosca and Stars crossing the street there. They're, they're going slow there. So the sign was put in the wrong location. It doesn't make sense. Either it's put at the other side of the street, um, or, um, at the other, on the other side of the street at the other end, um, or it's put near Stars Restaurant with a commercial building. It'd be much more appropriate there. I think it's good, and it's going to stop, it's going to stop them slowing. The big, biggest risk, every night of the week, people are going, crossing those si- sidewalks at Cafe Tosca and they, they're, they're only getting hit. I know from experience. Probably, every one of you probably know when you go to Cafe Tosca. It should, you put it, put, it's a perfect spot. And I'll, I'll be happy to meet JR there tomorrow and, and show him. And if he agrees, then let's just move him. But I think they should be removed. They weren't, they, they, there was no, I, Andrea, can I build a house or do, you know, in Hingham, you know, without, you know, changing something, without approval from the historic commission? No. You've got to get permission. And Tom, you're not right. It, it wasn't approved. And I, I, I totally appreciate the fact that you're trying to slow down traffic on North Street, but it's in the wrong location, okay? I think in, in front of a commercial building, it looks like something that, look, that I used to, it looks like something, it should be in East Boston, in, in industrial area, this flashing sign down there. I welcome all of you to go down there tonight and look at it in front of a residential property. It really looks hideous. It really does. Um, so.
Well, I mean, I, I think you've raised some public safety issues. I mean, I, I'll say this with all respect, you are, you are not the ultimate determination of, of, on, on public safety. We, we do have folks that we're looking, but your input is in fact important and it will be listened to.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I, I don't think we're going to decide tonight on the location or the style, right? We have some work to do there to figure out the appropriate locations and the appropriate styles. So that won't be decided tonight. We do have meetings the next two Tuesdays, the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth. I'm fine having this on the agenda and opening, opening it up to the public. Um, I, I would say, to your point, Joe, if, if we don't have a good solution by the twenty-sixth, we take them down and start over. Bill, do you have comments on that? If they should come down before we have an opportunity for public comment or wait?
I think we should study it publicly. I'd be interested in, um, what Andrea said is that she said she found some alternatives. I mean, as long as those, whatever the alternatives are, as long as they catch the attention of driver and they just move people down, I'd be okay with that. Um, I'm, I'm okay with moving them. I'm not going to vote to remove them.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Not tonight. Not tonight. I mean, if, if we get some input on the historic commission from residents and we look at alternatives, I, I would be okay with that. But, um, I think, again, I'd be okay with maybe moving them, adjusting them a little bit, but ultimately, um, you should have a public process getting looking people.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Bill. I think, you know, I'm not in favor of, of removing the signs, but I think moving them to the right location, getting the right signage is what's important. Um, and I, Liz, I agree with your time schedule, um, which is e- either we've resolved this issue, at least on North Street, was it by the twenty?
Twenty-six.
By the twenty-sixth, or, or they come, or they're moved or in some way. Uh, and I think that what we heard concerning Old Ship Church is, is very important and, um, we, we should look at this.
I, I think we should, for the record, I think we should look at the others as well. We should look at all.
Oh, of course.
We should look at all of it.
Yes.
And notify the abutters, hold public meetings, and again, perhaps even a joint session if you feel it's appropriate. We should do the full public process that wasn't done. I, I just took offense to, or, or exception to the idea that there was no process, that there was a process.
Yes. Of course, there was a process. This wasn't done willy-nilly for no reason. Everyone's top priority is safety. So absolutely. Um, Tom, appreciate your efforts. JR, I know has been working very hard on this as well as, as Jeff. Um, but we do want to take a step back and make sure that we go through the proper process and gather feedback, um, and, and find a good, a good solution, um, and not sacrifice safety in, in the meantime. Um, and if that means extra patrol cars downtown, then that's something that we can work with the chief on.
Did, Andrea, were you going to be able to submit, um, what you found to JR so that it's considered? That'd be great. Your silence speaks volumes. It's okay.
Yes, please. I would appreciate that.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Oh, and I do. Okay. I got to unmute myself. Yes, I will happily do that. Thank you so much.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say I'll be happy to meet Tom down there, just to, you know, and I, Tom does a great job for the town. He's invaluable to town. I'd be happy to meet him down there just to show him what I, you know, and I think he'll agree with me. But in any case, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Excellent. Well, thank you. Appreciate everybody's feedback. We will continue the discussion next week. Okay. Next on the agenda. Okay, next on the agenda, special police officer appointment. We have a potential candidate, Jeffrey Traynor. We have Deputy Chief Ryan O'Shea with us.
Good evening. Thank you, Deputy Chief Ryan O'Shea, Hingham Police Department. And we are respectfully requesting to hire retired Sergeant Jeffrey Traynor as a special police officer. Sergeant Traynor retired in August 2023 from the Cohasset Police Department after a 30-year career. He's interested in working for a larger agency where he can find work consistently. A number of our command staff have professional relationships with Sergeant Traynor and recommend him for employment. I also spoke with Chief Quigley of Cohasset Police Department, who recommended Sergeant Traynor as a special police officer. Reason we're requesting this appointment now is that we have department range training over the next few weeks, so we can get Sergeant Traynor qualified without having to schedule a separate training. He'll be ready and working prior to our yearly reappointment date of all special officers, which is in October. Sergeant Traynor would fill an empty position created when Mitch Powers retired at the end of June. Mitch Powers worked as a special officer for many years after a long full-time career with our department. As an overview, special officers who work for the Hingham Police Department do not work in a patrol capacity, but the assistant department in filling roadwork details, and special officers also work special events, including town and state elections, town meetings, the Fourth of July parade, and other important events in the town. Special officers maintain the same standard of training as a full-time officer, including in-service training, range qualification, CPR, and other necessary trainings assigned by the department, and they do this at no cost to the department. Sergeant Traynor has passed a background check, including a psychological exam, a drug test, a review of his training records, and we feel he'll be an excellent addition to our department. I appreciate the Select Board's consideration of this matter.
Excellent, thank you. Is the background check process the same for full-time officers as special?
Yes, so with police reform a few years ago, now everything is standardized. Everything's exactly the same. Every training's the same, every background investigation is the same, everything's all the same, so there's no missed opportunities in the road or anything like that.
Excellent, okay. And I did review, obviously, he has a tremendous amount of experience, and thank you for including the references as well. I don't have any questions or concerns. Joe, do you?
Yeah, I've reviewed it as well. Very impressive. I think this is an excellent candidate. One question, what impact, if any, does this have on the department's budget?
None, no. In fact, it's, has no impact. As I mentioned, special officers train at no cost to the department, and when they do work a detail, the town charges an extra 10% fee on top of the detail, so no cost to the department at all.
Great, thank you.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions, thank you, Deputy Chief, Select Board of...
Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I'm making a motion to appoint Jeffrey Traynor as a special police officer for the town of Hingham through October 31st, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill? And I'm an a as well. Passes unanimously.
Can I ask why this, this appointment's only through October 31st?
And then we'll reappoint everyone at the end of October.
You'll get the full slate.
Oh, we'll get the full slate, okay. It seems like a really short timeframe. We're doing this, and then he's, okay.
Quick career here.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, and welcome to Jeffrey Traynor. Excited to have you. Okay, next on the agenda, appointments. I do have an appointment. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Elliot Place to the Climate Action Commission for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is public comment. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none. Next, Town Administrator Select Board reports. Art, do you have anything to report?
Sure. If I may, just one item this evening. I just want to share with the community that our next blood drive is set for Tuesday, the 26th, at our senior center, also known as the Center for Independent Living. Time frame is 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We're certainly eager to encourage folks to make an appointment to donate blood, and that can be done by dialing 1-800-RED-CROSS.
Excellent, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Michelle?
That'll be this evening, thank you.
Tom?
I do have a notice to read to the public. I think it's important for everyone to hear. So the Massachusetts Department of Public Health has notified the Hingham Health Department that a mosquito in Hingham has tested positive for West Nile virus. Today, there have been, as of today, there have been no human cases of West Nile virus detected in Hingham this year. Currently, Hingham is at a low risk for West Nile virus. And please keep in mind the following ways to prevent West Nile virus. One, be prepared. Know your risk. Repair screens, clean up to get rid of mosquito breeding sites. Be aware of stagnant water on private property. Example is unused swimming pools, et cetera. And consult the local Board of Health with any questions. That number is in Hingham, 781-741-1466. Or you could always email Susan Sani at healthdirector@hingham-ma.gov. Also, we ask that, the DPH recommends that people wear mosquito repellent between dusk and dawn, that you wear long sleeves and long pants from dusk to dawn, and that you use mosquito netting on baby carriages and playpens. To view Hingham's risk level, please see the website and the map on the, at the Massachusetts Abovirus Update or mass.gov. And also note that Plymouth County Mosquito Control Project does accept requests for adult mosquito control from Hingham residents. Then you can call 781-585-5450 between 7:00 AM and 2:30. And if you're looking for more information, you can go on the plymouthmosquito.org website.
Excellent, thank you, Tom.
You bet.
Bill?
I was just going to point out what a great day Saturday was. It was dedicated ceremony on Saturday morning at the Maritime Center. The Virginia Tech Lecture Series was phenomenal with Doris Kearns Goodwin, for those who were able to attend that. And then we had Harbor Fest and Harbor Feast. It was just really, it's an awesome day. And one of those, I know, you know, Joe, Liz, and I were at all of these events, and just one of the things, all of the tremendous volunteers that put these together and tremendous amount of hours that went into planning these events. We're so lucky to have people who do so much dedication to our community. It was just a great day.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. It was a great day, and we are certainly grateful to all the people, all the people it took to pull that off. Joe, do you want to add anything?
So I just want to add first to Tom's report, I believe that mosquito has been swatted and killed.
Yes, the mosquito is dead.
Very important. And then thanks to Bill. Hopefully, the public knows that there was a dunk tank available, that the weather spared Bill and me the chance of being dunked, but that'll be an opportunity next year to dunk your favorite members of the Select Board, and we hope everyone shows up for that. And really, just to comment on the exceptional effort by the town administration over the past month in advancing a number of projects for the benefit of the town. So thank you. That's it.
Yes, thank you. And another weekend of activities. On Saturday, September 15th at 4:45, there's the National POW MIA Recognition Day in Hingham. And also, or sorry, that's on Friday at 4:45. And also on Friday at 7:00 PM is the home opener game, football game at Hingham High. So hopefully, people can join that. And then, of course, Happy New Year to everyone celebrating Rosh Hashanah, which also starts this weekend.
Starts Friday evening, continuing Saturday and Sunday.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yes. I did just want to make a comment with great sadness, actually, that Richard Popolo, also known as the Candy Man, has passed away, and our community mourns with the family, and we certainly extend our deepest sympathy. So thanking of you all. And our next meeting is, as I said, next Tuesday, the 19th, and we will have public comment related to the downtown traffic calming. So hopefully, people can join and provide feedback. And that's it. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Thank you.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. We are adjourned at 7:40 PM. Thank you.
Thanks.